The Texas.
Yeah.
Pretty smart.
Oh, y'all coming up?
Yeah. Texas don't.
Oh, yeah, you do.
We.
Texas said she can be up there. Did the board vote to do that? Do you have any concern or? While we started. And I foresee a problem. No, it is you bumped them stuff. Yeah.
I want to stay with you.
Morning. Thank you for being here. If you'll stand, we'll be led in a word of prayer by Commissioner Pearson. Remain standing for our pledges if you would.
Our God and our Father in heaven were so grateful to you for the blessings of this day. We come to you through our Savior, Jesus Christ, and we thank you so much for the blessings that we have through him. We thank you for Van Zach County and we pray that your Holy Spirit will be here with us this morning as we conduct the business of the county. We pray that we always do things that are according to your will. We love you so much and we thank you for all of our blessings. Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
I call to order the regular session meeting of the Van Zach County Commissioners' Court. On Wednesday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. At nine oh four a.m., announced forum is established with all members of the court present and all members of the court in position. They. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meeting for the Commissioners' Court approval signed for March the third, twenty twenty-one, March the fifth, twenty twenty-one, and March the eighth, twenty twenty-one. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Second by Commissioner West. Is there any questions, corrections, or addition to the minutes? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner LaPran. Is there any questions or discussion about any of the bills that were submitted for payment? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and discuss and consider ratifying county bills as submitted.
So.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. There a second? Got a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion about any of the bills that's being ratified? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five. Item number five, is there any announcements or anything we need to be made aware of? Is there anything upcoming or anything? Is there anything, Mr. Parker, that we need to know about? Okay. Being none, I think Mr. Pearson has a presentation to make.
Yes, sir. I'd like to take just a minute to talk about someone. He started work in Van Zach County from March. I think two thousand and eight. For a little thirteen years. Now he left, John left a little before thirteen years. John come on up there. John Grimes has worked right in shine. Nearly thirteen years over in Van Zach County precinct three at transfer station. He's done an excellent job. I believe. I know a friend who worked up there. I thought, I thought the commission of the other, but John works up there in the elements. Three days a week as for a long time and excited that since it was fixing to be eighty years old. John come up eighty years old. He's seventy-nine and he's going, he's going to retire from the county. John. You're a smart man, John. You better take the two hundred dollars and sell the plot. I would've done the same thing. But John, here's a, here's an empty pound weight. Was we a push that back that time? A push that Tom, your service over there? All the things you're out there helping, well, they're trash on the road, they're helping to the land. We appreciate it. Thank you, John. I'll get back with you on that. Thank you, John. I'll see you this afternoon, John.
All right.
Thank you. John, John's a fine gentleman. We, we need a lot of people like him in Van Zach County.
Is there any other general business we need to be made aware of? Being none, we'll move to public comments. Item number six, Scott, did anybody sign up for public comments? Okay. Item number seven, discuss and consider approving a resolution authorizing loan agreements among Van Zach County Cultural Education Facilities Finance Corporation, St. John Twenty-Three Incorporated. Commercial Bank and authorizing promissory notes and other matters in connection therewith. Now, there was a meeting prior to this meeting in here with that, with that board. Mr. West serves on the board. He will not be voting in this due to conflict of interest. He serves on the board. Mr. West, did the board approve that?
The board did approve it and what it's, what it's all about is that a, a school, in this particular case, wanted to issue some, some notes and about ninety, about nine point four million. And there's a, I don't know, some policy out there that if a county or city will go with it, let us, let them use your name in the financing, then they get it tax-free. They don't have to pay taxes on it. And, and we get fifteen thousand dollars for loaning them our name, basically is what it is. We have no responsibility if they don't, if they don't comply with their note that they default, we have no responsibility. And all we're doing is loaning them our name so they can get a loan with, with the lower interest rate and no taxes on it.
And the board did approve that submitted to the Commissioners' Court. Okay. Has Mr. Wade zoomed in?
I only have one person.
That is, okay. Okay. Is there any questions or discussion from the, from the Commissioners?
It was fifteen thousand this time.
Yeah.
It's been ten thousand, so we're up to five thousand.
And. The only negative to the county, and it's not really a negative, maybe it's positive. I believe so. County can only borrow up to ten billion dollars through first credit, capital credit. And this, so it'll, it will restrict the county from borrowing money for this year. But that's probably a good thing.
Ten, ten billion, yeah.
Ten billion to the cap. We can still borrow two hundred and seventy thousand.
Do you have anything? Okay. We've done it before. We've done it several times since, since, since I came. Right, so.
This still leaves enough room to cover item number fifteen on the agenda.
Yeah, more than. No, we'll have to buy this.
It, it does leave room for that and plus about, I believe.
Two hundred and something.
About almost three hundred thousand, but it does restrict the borrowing. It doesn't restrict. You can still borrow, but when we would have to pay.
We pay higher interest.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not in that position. According to me.
Were, were you? Were you thinking about, this is a little ahead of time, Steve, on the cars, you, on your next year's budget?
We're going to request.
Yeah.
This time here is only for the calendar year, right?
That's my understanding.
Yes, this calendar year.
So if we do it next year, won't they?
It won't.
Today is holidays. We just hold the holidays, we'll spread it next year. Some, the holiday that you realize on the.
Okay. So I don't think this would affect, I don't think this would affect that. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried with one abstain. Mr. West abstained. So motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and consider Commissioners' Court to proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Van Zach County. They want to, they have asked to be on the next agenda on the thirty-first right before April, so I would entertain a motion to table item number eight and bring it back. So I got a motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Pearson. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We'll bring that back on the thirty-first. Item number nine, discuss and consider appointing Samuel Spencer to E S D number one board. Believe that's yours, Virgil.
Commissioner, this is the E S D's head of may, thanks, covers part of Van Zach County. The head of board member to resign and Mr. Spencer is going, would like to take his place on the board, so I'm making a motion that we accept his nomination.
Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner LaPran. Any questions or discussion? You see the application before you. Any questions? Being none, all in favor of appointing Samuel Spencer to E S D number one board, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider assisting Canton E D C from the Van Zach County Economic Development Assistance Fund. Julie is here, present with us today. I asked her if she would be here in case you guys, she's been emailing the Commissioners' Court and they have an opportunity. Julie, if you would like to present.
Judge and Commissioners, I thank you for your consideration. The Canton Economic Development Corporation is entering into a contract with Phoenix Food. It is a dry-mix food manufacturing facility here in town. They currently employ approximately thirty full-time equivalent jobs. They have twenty full-time with an average salary of about thirty thousand dollars a year. And then they have, they hire seasonally another thirty to fifty that are work four to six months and they work forty hours a week. So we have been working with them on their expansion. They're trying to expand and in their consideration of expansion, they live at Canton and several other communities. So we are working with them. They're planning to hire an additional, at least six additional employees, full-time equivalents. And they are putting a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into equipment and building furnishings. They are leasing a new building, so there'll be an eight thousand square foot building added to the tax rolls. And then by year three, they're planning to add additional capital equipment and at least a hundred thousand dollars. We've got a five-year contract and it is for the expansion of capital expenditures. It's for the retention of the current jobs and for the expansion of the additional jobs. And the E D C has a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars set aside. Part of that is Job Creation Grant and part is Capital Investment Grant. And we're asking the Commissioners' Court to partner with us with forty thousand dollars to assist in this. We did do a third-party impact analysis. And the impact to the county is a net benefits of seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars over a ten-year period, plus an additional almost eighteen thousand dollars through your road district tax. The rate of return for the county is eighteen point two percent and the payback period of this in net benefits is five point four years.
Does anyone have any questions for Julie? You did, very thorough. Thank you.
About ninety percent of their jobs are from people who live in Van Zach County. So they hire a lot of high school students and they return to college and then it gives them a chance for a full-time position when they return and live in this community.
But what, what happens if, if we don't do this? I mean, what happens if, if Canton E D C or, or the county economic development money does not go to this company?
We have committed at the, at the city level to do this, so our part of the package will continue. They can decide not to accept it and go a different route. Right now, they're adding an eight thousand square foot building. They're in three separate buildings. And so another community might be able to get them inside of one building, get the facilities that they need, and then they would give them all kinds of tax breaks and everything for the new jobs that they're creating in that community. So there is a chance of that, but I think that that they're wanting to be here. They're signing a ten-year lease for this eight thousand square foot building. They will start on that as soon as they get approval of this package. So they're wanting to be here and serve, continue to serve in this community. There's always that risk. I think that they want to be here and maybe our portion of it may be enough, but they were. If the package we presented included some additional, they first asked for tax rebates, but because they're asking for tax rebates on existing property, that would be a loss of revenue to the county. So I didn't think that you'd want to do a package like that and rather do a grant rather than get into a tax rebate situation. There's some risk, but I think that we.
Personally, I would like to see us continue doing what we've done in the past as far as an incentive on new, on the new employees that they pull in, do this, which we partner with other E D Cs on that. Thank you so much for money after that. New employees been there a year, that's just my personal opinion.
Any other questions or discussion? For Julie? I would entertain, and you're asking for forty thousand?
Yes.
From, from our economic, the county's Economic Development Fund, which, let me, that, that's not taxpayer money. That's, that's money we get from, I think, the, the unclaimed capital from co-op, electric co-ops, the unclaimed money. So every year we apply for that money. I apply for it. They send it to the county. We, it has to be spent on economic development for Van Zach County. And I've, we apply every year. We put it in there. I don't, do you know exactly how much we have in that account? It's up there. Yeah, three forty-nine and, and it can only be spent for there.
Well, they haven't been there a year. See, there, that was an employee, a new, bringing employees to Van Zach County. They have to be there for one year. After they've been there one year, then we, we pay an incentive of bringing a new employee to Van Zach County for one year.
Yeah.
That's the only thing that concerns me is this mainly retention to, we're giving money to keep somebody here and this, when, when you do this, this is nothing that you, you're going to open up a can of worms. Every company here is going to start saying, we're leaving if you don't add here. That's the only thing that concerns me.
Well, we have the decision each time what we want to do.
It's case by case.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we assist Canton E S D with the forty thousand dollars from Van Zach County to come out and develop assistance for me.
Got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay. Second by Commissioner West. And the check, the, the only thing is, we write the check, the check will be made out to you guys. E S D, just like we did the Veterans Memorial, Veterans Memorial. We, because then that, we have backup. You know what? We spend it for economic development. We don't give it to the company, you know? We give it to you.
And we do have callback clauses. They have to repay if they don't meet their requirements in the, in the contract.
Okay.
Is there additional jaws being created?
There's going to be six to, the promising six. There's going to be six to twelve probably in the next three years. Full-time equivalents, so.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? We're motion a second. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Item number eleven, discuss and consider approving a contract between Van Zach County and the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake. No, Virgil has been very instrumental. You've been the one contacting.
Been working on this almost a year, as you know, but I've been working with Lynette Ainsworth. She's the president of the Board of Director for the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake. To take in animals that are seized by the Van Zach County Sheriff's Department. The contract is for a fee of six hundred and fifty dollars a month with a maximum of ten animals per month. And they've also agreed to hold animals for court proceedings if need be for a small fee of fifteen dollars a day. And if court rules in favor of the county, then they would, they would charge the owner of the animal instead of the, instead of the. Instead of the county. I have been in contact with Sheriff Hendricks and he, he likes a contract that he's like to take, seize animals. And we have money budgeted for this. We have a line out and budgeted for this. At present, Kaufman County uses this facility, but Kaufman is building a brand-new animal shelter and it's to be completed in December of this year. So after the completion of that, this ain't worth it. She should, should be able to give us a better, a better deal on, on the new contract, so.
And more dogs.
And, and yeah, absolutely, more animals. So anyway, that's, that's what I've come up. It's, it's hard to, you know, get people to take care of animals, seize animals. It's, it's not an easy thing. So I, I make a motion that, that we accept this contract between Van Zach County and the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. Is there any discussion or questions?
I think this is a good first step in what we need to be doing. Because for the last six and a half years, about half the calls we get are dogs in the county that are running wild and need to be taken care of. So maybe this will help.
Any other discussion? Being none, all in favor of approving the contract between Van Zach County and the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twelve, discuss and consider letter of support for Canton area radio emergency service or cares. Mr. David Pulli is present with us today, represent that. This is requested. Mr. Pulli, if you'd like to address for it, you may do it from right there if it's, if, if it's okay or you, you make, that probably better come up. We have a mic, we have a microphone up here.
Got MRI later today to find out what's going on with my lower back. Hopefully, next time I see y'all, I'll be in better shape. The, our carriage group is just simply wanting to be able to assist county residents in case of emergencies. And we won't set up a repeater in the south, in a more southern part of the county instead of up at Will's Point. We're about five miles south of Canton, off of Nineteen is our site that we're willing to put equipment up. And our main goal, we know that, we learned with the last emergency that you didn't necessarily need amateur radio to assist, but the rest of the county probably will. And that would be our goal to, to go out and reach out to the areas and find out where issues are, to try and give welfare traffic or, or welfare information to other family members as folks would be worried about that. And just general helping with communications. That's what we're in business for. That's what we, we want to do and would appreciate a letter of recommendation from you to us.
Yeah, I think it's to apply for a grant.
Yes, we are applying for a grant.
Do you know how much the grant would be?
I think five thousand dollars. Which is, would get us right, just about where we need to be.
And who owns, you, you said put the, you're going to put the repeater south of Canton.
Uh huh.
Here. Who owns that tower?
It is not only a tower. It is on the, uh, Dergan's Family Farm. It's family here for, forever. Virgil, you know Dergan's? They have a, a silo that will never be used again.
The old silo.
And so we're putting, making plans to, they've agreed a hundred percent. They want to help us. And so we're putting radios, antennas, backup power, anything and or everything that we need in order to. And so we're putting radios, antennas, backup power, anything and or everything that we need in order to facilitate this for the rest of the county. And we plan on putting four repeaters up there for different frequencies and different usages. And all of course will be pointed toward assisting Vansack County residents, that's what the whole thing we're in it for.
Anyone have any questions for David? Sheriff, would that interfere with? Okay, okay.
I know they, David and this group works a lot through the P W P with the radios.
And we're willing to increase that usage also, that's part of what this is for.
I make a motion, we write this letter of support.
Okay. Yeah, I think David's written the letter, we've been in contact, the, the letter, so just to permit to sign this letter here. We got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Milton. Any other question or discussion?
Do I need to redo that for to authorize the county judge to sign this letter of support?
There you go, is that your motion? This Virgil, I mean, that's your motion, your second, okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye, those opposed same sign. Motion carried, thank you, thank you for what you do, thank you for, for all the work you guys do. In Vansack County, we appreciate it.
Will I be able to receive the letter?
You can't, oh yeah. Will?
I was just asking.
Okay, hold on just a second. Right now?
Oh, well. Thank you, sir.
If you'll carry that in there and make sure Christie gets a copy of that, well, she'll run you a copy.
Okay.
And of, of that there, but I need that copy to go back in my book, okay, is that it?
You bet.
Okay, thank you, sir. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider contract between Tyler Technologies and Vansack County Clerk, I think Susan wanted to table that item. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner West, all in favor say aye, those opposed same sign. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider approved bond renewal for Michelle Candy, first assistant auditor in the amount of five thousand dollars. Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye, those opposed same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider the purchase of a wheel excavator financing through government capital by Road and Bridge Precinct One. That's the comment come from Mr. LaPrada on the other government capital. That won't keep me from buy, buying this, Willie.
Make sure I didn't mess myself up for a guy.
Uh, did you want, I mean.
This is a multi-use piece of equipment, I use it for boom accidents, cleaning ditches, clearing debris on roadways. And it's designed where disperses the weight much better than a grade off, so it doesn't damage the road, I can use it in wetter weather. Also, I wanna get it now on my first terms, I'm doing a four-year note, so when I, if I get voted out in four years, whoever replaces me ain't gotta carry a debt I made for it. So that's one way to get this now.
Can you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this purchase and financing for this wheel excavator.
Okay, got a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye, those opposed same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider implementing time rounding for employee pay periods. I'm not sure who put that on the agenda, but I'll let, Dan, you wanna address it?
Yeah, Commissioner LaPrada has asked about this and time clock rounding goes by a lot of different names, typically people recognize it as the seven-minute rule. Basically, what it is, is let's say I come to work at seven fifty-eight in the morning, I clock in. The time clock will recognize it as eight A M. On the same end, if I clock in at eight oh two, the time clock will round it back to eight A M. So what you're doing is taking out the differences and one example he used was, he has all eight of his guys standing there at the time clock at six twenty-eight and they're just waiting till six thirty. And then I will click, 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 all eight of them. And if they had the time clock rounding, I believe this is what you were saying, then they could clock in two minutes early, two minutes late, it wouldn't make any difference. So I provided you with some information from easy clocking and how rounding off would work. I also provided you information from the Texas Workforce Commission. Labor Wage Hour Commissioner, it says that this people, it's an accepted practice used all over the place. But I, I have some reservations about it myself. I think there are benefits and the main benefits would be easier calculations for our treasury office. So instead of, you know, all of these variations in, in time, it would round everybody to six minutes every, all the way around the clock. It also prevents early clocking in Commissioner LaPrada's experience. But the negatives, I think what happens is you'll lose your real-time data, so when I punch in, I'm generally late on that. And about eight oh three, it won't show eight oh three, it'll show eight. So you'll lose that real-time data, cause the system does it with every instance, every time someone clocks, so that real-time data will be lost. You may also experience accidental overpays, so if someone does clock in at four minutes early, they're shown sixty minutes before the hour. And if they were to clock out four minutes late, they're shown twelve minutes after the hour. So that's kind of an issue. The biggest one for me though is, it makes it suspicious both to our employees who, you know, if every day I'm here at seven fifty-eight and I clock in every single day and go to work, but you're only showing me at eight o'clock. Some employee could get the notion, hey, you're ripping me off two minutes a day. Additionally, any outside agency that was to look at us, even though it's an approved practice with the Department of Labor, they could still question, hey, all your times are straight up on the hours. We have some questions as to that, and generally, they don't come to the employer for those questions, they go to the employee. So that's what I've got for you and.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, sure. Like you said, someone actually did go to work at seven fifty-eight, or they actually did clock out at five oh two. And they was working right to that point, do we have the ability to go in and make a correction as supervisors when we approve time?
You could, but then you're looking at four punches a day, ten, for you, eight punches, eight days in the pay period times eight employees, so you'll be scrutinizing. Didn't do the math there, I'd say about a hundred different punches in a two-week period where typically in my experience, most of our supervisors are not giving it near that level of scrutiny. And I thought the whole idea here was to reduce work, but that would actually create additional work.
I was just thinking like yours, that I had a man who actually pulled back in five minutes late from the job site and clocked down. With this system, if it would've rolled him back, I can still go in there and correct it to make sure he got what he was actually working.
True, but if it is five minutes after an hour, they'll roll it forward, they'll get more credit than he would have if he actually punched at eight oh five.
I don't understand that. You said if he clocked in at four minutes till, he gets six minutes, if it's four minutes after, you get twelve, that doesn't make sense.
I provided you a sheet. Lists every potential difference here, so time record, record, time records between fifty-eight minutes and three minutes will be modified to the zero minutes, for both sides of the hour. Four minutes and nine minutes will be modified to six minutes.
But why?
Why? Is that your question? Cause that's how the system works. That's what rounding is.
Why? I'm not saying that's not what it does, but you're saying that that makes sense.
Are you printing out the one that rounds on the tenth, there's also an option for rounding on the twenty-fifth, right?
Yes, so this is tenths of an hour, the Department of Labor authorizes up to quarters of an hour. So that, that math would be a little bit different, but that's where the actual seven-minute rule came from. So I can, if we're doing quarters of an hour, I can clock in at any time after eight, all the way till eight oh six, and it will pull it back to eight. But if I clock in at eight oh seven, it's gonna move me forward to eight fifteen, that's the quarter hour rounding. Seven-minute rule, and, and every seven minutes past the quarter hour, it rounds it forward, anything less, then it rounds it back.
At present, it just registers what, whatever the time the employee shot in. I think if you just kinda had a policy, just like a verbal policy, when you're being to clock in, whenever you go to work, I mean, my guys get in there and they make their own coffee or something, it's even entirely, but when eight o'clock comes, all of them just clocked in, they go to work.
Yeah, surprisingly, that's a surprise to me, we have some supervisors who are so good at this with coaching their folks, that they don't even give one minute of overtime in a two-week period, and they're not short one minute in that whole two-week period. So it can be done, rounding is a different option, it's just whichever you choose to do.
Which seems to me to round it's a wash, because you're still gonna be rounded even if you go to the seven-minute. Would you not? If you go to the seven-minute rule, rounded, it's still rounded.
Yes.
Backwards and forward.
Correct.
I don't see no benefit from it. Oh, Sheriff? Okay, and I think, I think Dan's position is that, you know, we, we've been through an audit before. If you punch in, you punch out, you get paid, that, it is what it is.
My, my biggest opposition in this whole thing is that an employee may at some point question that Vansack County is treating them fair, and that is not what I wanna go down. We, we need our employees to believe that we are always transparent and gonna pay them for every minute that they work. And as soon as you bring some doubt in there, it creates an ugly element in our employees' mind that they believe their employer is taking advantage of, and I'm against that.
Okay, is there a motion?
Well, the reason I asked for this was for clarification on how the time clock system works, I appreciate your presentation, so everybody understands.
Okay. I would make a motion that we just stay like we are, it's actual clock and you pay them, we pay you that, that would be my motion, is there a second? Seconds. It'd come back up. We can always bring it back up. Okay. I made the motion, Commissioner Milton, second, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye, those opposed same sign. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider implementing farmers market in the basement down here on June nineteenth, I believe, still the date of twenty twenty-one. Now, in the past, Dan just sent me an email, said, do I have your blessing, yes, and I give it to you. Covid has changed everything. Before I opened it up and said, I stopped, oh Dan, I would be more comfortable if the commissioners were to, you know, would pay something, come up. You still wanna have the farmers market in the basement, the governor's opening the state, we would entertain the pleasure of the court. Got a motion by Commissioner West to participate and allow Dan to do a farmer's market on June eighteen, twenty twenty-one, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion?
But, Dan, it kinda depends on what you're gonna grow and bring down here.
I'm definitely throwing my share, but I need all of you, plan your garden and plan on bringing your stuff and more things this year, Mr. West.
And I know the, the city has a farmer's market over here, and the city can participate, come in, be part of it anyway. And the last, last time you brought vendors, did you not help?
Let's keep this in here, it's actually.
Camera, camera's rolling.
Is my trick way of getting our employees to recognize that there are fun and delicious alternatives to not eating so well, so what I do is bring in vendors who help me communicate a healthier eating lifestyle. And we'll be doing the same kinds of thing this year and have giveaway stuff for all of our employees.
Any other questions, discussion? We have a motion of second, all in favor say aye, those opposed same sign. Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments. You have the budget amendments before you. Is there a motion to approve the budget amendments? Got a motion by Commissioner Milton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any discussion, questions? Oh. Yeah, he's already got the check. Yeah, I thought, I thought you were talking about the retiree quality, then. Yeah, yeah, he's already. So, that was a question you had, what the Commissioner LaPrada.
Attached that with at this time, so we know.
Okay, so you're good with it? Okay, okay. Any other question, discussion? Being none, is there, is there a motion? We got a second, okay. All in favor say aye, those opposed same sign. Motion carried. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices, departments, and county government approval entry of same and the courts minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, you have any comment?
Well, I'm just gonna say, maybe this is a law showing that we're returning back to normal, cause we got all of our reports.
No. Is that a motion to approve the monthly reports? Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West to prove. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner West to approve the monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments. Uh, second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion on any of the reports? Being none, all in favor say aye, those opposed same sign. Motion carried, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Y'all wanna stand?
Yeah.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioners LaPrada, I second it. All in favor say aye, those opposed same sign, we are adjourned.